Are terrible. And that's leveling it all up, you can see where the pink paint is, it's getting through all the curb, all the cuts for utility cuts, all of that stuff. The high ridge, I think, is not nearly as bad. They looked at a lot of places where it's spidered. The roads separated, you know, it's spread, just like you'd expect asphalt to do, it's moving sideways. It's not a hole, you just look at it and it's like a spider web. So, those aren't really causing problems because they're not three dimensional. They're only spreading. And I would rather we do half the job now, see how it works, and then go back later and then pick high rids that we need to get done, and pick those piece of high rids and come back later. I'd rather not do the whole thing in one shot. I like your company, I think it's the right way to go. The other thing is, in our road fund that we've set aside for this kind of stuff, we have thirty-six thousand dollars sitting in the bank right now. If the city council approves, about twenty thousand to do those two streets, we can write that check tomorrow. We get, we doesn't, we already got the money set aside. We're ready to do that right now. And I think that's-
Also, a big company, they can do the job in a couple of days.
Take a couple of days.
That's right.
Twenty thousand dollars, I mean, we already have the money. You know, so there's no banking, there's no worried about any kind of that stuff. It's not two hundred fifty thousand to rebuild the road. How long can it be?
Does it get carried up to some level where people are gonna be a little more happy with it?
You know, it's, it's, they're gonna pack, the problem that Kerry has, Melody's got a little, Kerry's much worse.
Melody, yeah.
Yeah, Melody'd be good because they get rid of some of the dips, and Kerry is terrible because of all the utility cuts. They, they didn't put the utilities on both sides of the street, they only put on one side of the street. So the water, if you're on the other side of the street, you gotta go get it. So everybody cut the street, nobody bored, they just trenched across Kerry Lane, and then put dirt back in it. And it, and it's, that's why it's, Kerry Lane is horrible with lots of these cur, with lots of these utility cuts. There's parts of Melody that just flat disintegrate. The curbs on, the edges on Melody are just gone, the road's gone. So, you know, this will get them up to, I think, you know, really, it's gonna look pretty, it's gonna look like a repair. You're gonna see asphalt patches down the street, but it should be a smooth ride.
I, I like this, Angel, just start, just start with the worst streets and then, well, we gotta wait, keep going. I mean, the money's, it's a down value bank, I'd give, I'd give roads fixed.
We have the money now, we have almost the money. If we decide to go back and do high rids later, when the guy was doing it, I mean, he picked a lot of stuff on high rids, that's why it's ten thousand square feet of high ridge. My guess is if we went back and Gary and I did it, it'll probably be half that.
I, I think, yeah, we start with Melody and Kerry, and then we go back and pick the trouble spots on high ridge. Maybe not every spot that they-
It's the road in front of my house.
So I'm sure you don't wanna do that.
I don't wanna do that, no, no, no. But, um, so, if, if the council is happy, what you could do is you could authorize me to execute a contract with these guys, to do not exceed price of twenty-five thousand, in case there's something that comes up. And we have that money set aside, we could execute that, and they'd probably be out before next council.
So, so you're thinking that covers Melody, Kerry, and?
No, just Melody and Kerry, none of high ridge.
None of high ridge.
No, 'cause I think we wanna go back and re-mark high ridge. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question, the, uh, is this, so this is gonna be a patch, is there any intent, I know we originally talked about land plan, they're gonna have to do that cut through and connect right there.
Yeah.
Paving that, like concrete?
Yeah.
Is there any, so, do you think this is cost effective to fix this now and then maybe come back later and pave it? Is that what you're?
You know, the issue was, if land plan was gonna start in December, and if they were serious, and if they were gonna extend the road, then part of what I tried to do was work out, selling that lot, on, you know, doing this, could I connect the dots in some way? Because it's probably four hundred thousand dollars to concrete Melody Lane. Could I theoretically come up with a way to make it happen? And I did. There's a way to do it. The problem is, my land plan, I just don't know what they're doing.
You know, it's not these items, right, I mean, we could go, could go through the patches, and then a year later, or even less than that, throw it all away, but you can't bank it, and you can't plan on somebody else, we have to go-
So what we're really looking at, if you've looked at that sixty-two hundred, it's twelve-four, so about twelve thousand dollars. So the doomsday scenario, we spend twelve thousand dollars, they patch it, and next April or May, you see something going down the street, grinding it up, hauling it away, and we go, darn, that's twelve thousand, I wish we wouldn't have spent it. But you got a brand-new concrete rug staring in the face of you.
Or we wait and keep having this conversation for the next three years.
And for some of us that have been here for a long time, waiting on land plan.
We, we had a meeting with land plan, and we just felt like they were getting ready to tell us how they were moving forward and everything. They didn't know, they, they were, they were wanting to talk about something we'd already talked about, and we thought was, was settled, done.
So Kerry, is that the meeting recently, or the one ten years ago?
Well-
One oh six.
I know y'all, ever since I've been talking about land plan, I say, oh, it's just right around the corner, it's two years. Well, it's been two, four, six, eight, ten, it just keeps on going, yeah. So we, we don't know really what they're gonna do, we, we can't count them.
Tony? So is this like a semi-permanent repair then, so did they give you information, Gary, as far as how long the repair would last, I mean, given our, we're getting ready to go into the winter season?
Sure, well, the, there's no comparison with the two, uh, companies.
Right, right.
It's actually, uh, not only taking it up, but there's making a new base, or grinding it up, uh, putting, uh, material down. Yeah, yeah, if you just put, uh, uh, tar and asphalt over it, and you don't do that, then it's gonna come up pretty quick. Now, I, I don't know anything about roads. I, I know that for, for less money, the Waltz paving is, is willing to put a base down, compress it, and, and they've added a step to it, so they're, uh, it's a better deal.
I was just wondering, in a sense that you did, they did work for, like, Walmart, some of the bigger commercials?
Many different Walmarts.
Right, commercials, how long that, that type of repair had lasted? If they give you any type of a guideline as far as longevity on that?
Really sort of depends on the base, uh, how much of a good base it's got. And, and basically, they're using our base, they're grinding up the material that's already there. And so that's gonna be the base. What I venture is, how long it would last, I, I don't know.
See, I, I think Kerry will last a lot, relatively speaking, Kerry should last longer than, than Melody. Because Kerry, it's cuts. They're gonna level that up, dig it out, square it up, and, and make it level. Melody's got problems in the side of the road is gone. It's, it's gone, so it's kind of like building up this tabletop, no matter what you do, the ground still isn't next to it.
What's higher traffic road do?
It's always gonna wanna creep to the edges. Whereas, where Kerry, it's, it's leveling the road, it's, you know, in front of Gary, it's a little, the other Gary, Schröder's house, there's a little bit of edge work, but it's really not the edges of Kerry that are the problem, it's the cuts. And no matter what we do on Melody, if, if there's no, if the, if the, if the grass isn't up tight on the street, asphalt's a little, it's always, you know, not tomorrow, we know the failure mode isn't migraines. It squishes, it moves out, that's the failure mode. Helping with the base, you know, making a good foundation, make it stable, is it's just asphalt, if it's this thick on asphalt, go look at the stove. Put asphalt this thick, it moves all over the place, it just cracks, and it was stupid. But if it's, if it's, if it's, you know, hard, 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 and then you got this much asphalt, maybe the compression will be better. That's why I think it's, it's the right way to go.
Tony, I think maybe the, the answer to your question is, it'll be a better base, the way Waltz paving is going to do, it'll be better than Action was going to do. Obviously, what we hope will happen when we put concrete roads is, we'll create a great base.
It sounds like the other company was more of a Band-Aid, rather than a-
Right, one of them's a Band-Aid, one of them they're actually putting down a base, and, and they're cheap.
Yeah.
And so, so that's good, now, I have no idea how long it will last.
Did they give you any kind of warranty or anything?
It's the same procedure they use on fixing the, uh, the parking lot and the road that leads up to the Walmart.
The trade-off with it is not to put too much money into it, but to put just enough into it, so it can last that lifetime until we actually go to repair it.
When we put the concrete roads down, it's gonna be a great base, and, you know, it'll be a super road, we can do, we just care for it.
Yeah, so, look, I'm, I'm very excited that we're gonna get something big here. I think it's the right thing to do, I actually like the idea of doing that, I think it's a good idea.
That's the warranty.
Yeah, you know, it's a, it's a good way to test run, if you will, and sound, you know, and sound like. Only concern I have is, is that, you know, we didn't bid this out, right, it wasn't like an official RFP, it sounded, it sounded, you know, it was not a big enough job. So I'm just not so sure that the specs are the same, like, it would be nice if they quote, had the same square feet in there, and it said, you know, the same areas, right? So like, this one says forty thousand two hundred, and the other one says forty-two thousand, but you don't know, based on the paper, if they're quoting the same area. So, so the assumption is they are. So if we, if we assume that they use the same painting, and then if we assume that the painting is, you know, the areas that they wanna fix, and, and let's just face it, guys, we could paint the entire road, you could, you could do the, I mean, they, they, somebody had to make a decision at some point, these are the areas that need to be fixed. So the one company did that, and the assumption, the assumption is the other company used the exact same materials.
Yeah, I don't know.
So, so- There's only fifty-nine square feet difference in their estimate of the square foot.
Yeah, I just don't see it here.
Right, it's right here in the script, so Action is twenty thousand one hundred fifty-nine.
Yeah.
And Waltz is twenty thousand one hundred.
And where's it got the square feet in?
That's what the quality is, it says how it's been.
As long as it's the same-
Let me address you, what I told you, here's what I would like, if we decide to go with this company, what I would do is, is I would get Waltz to come out here with a different color paint. Tell them, you mark what you think you're gonna do and measure it. Just to make sure that everybody's on the board, you know, because exactly, I don't want to find out later, oh, we didn't see that pink one, we didn't see that one, or something, so. My idea would be to bring them back, here's an orange can or whatever, mark, let's double check, you mark everything that's part of your bid. And add up the square footage as, as a double check, because, you know, even though Gary took them around, I believe they're straight up.
Yeah.
Well, we, we've had that issue before, we had some of these road repairs, we verbally said, it's this, 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 and this, and they said, yeah, it's this many square feet, whatever, then they didn't do it. They forgot something, they forgot, and we gotta come back and finish. Yeah.
And you, you, you taught the ones, I mean, it sounds like everyone likes Waltz better, let's just talk about that one. They, when you did that one, were they amenable to doing this in pieces, like, half this year, half that year, or doing one road at a time?
In fact, we even said we'd do the whole job, and we could pay for half now, and pay, and like-
Could we do one road, see how it does, and then do the next road? That's kind of a marketing now, right, you're saying, hey, break it in half, or break it in thirds, or whatever.
Well, at some point, it's, it's not cost effective, because I already got a lot of equipment out.
So if we break that in half, is that gonna be exactly twenty thousand, assuming the measurements are correct?
No.
It'll be a little more-
It's, it's, well, it's-
Let's save that for some-
Yeah, yeah, exactly, it just happens to Kerry.
I think as long as we say, hey, can we have it this year, half that year, you suggested we break half a job, the other two. As long as we say it's gonna be forty thousand two hundred cut in half, plus maybe bring him, because he's not gonna do the whole job, or whatever. I don't think I have any issue with that.
So the only what we do is, the council will approve me executing a contract, do not exceed.
Yeah, so I would say half that, and cut it by ten, so the only issue is now, just, we get this on the table, if we go through and we mark it, and you're walking along and you find another patch that was never marked, never seen, and you wanna add it to there. Personally, I think, I think the council probably should give the leeway to add something in there, I mean, if it's twenty thousand one hundred-
That's what you said, you said, do not exceed twenty-five thousand.
Right, we just need to pick that correct number, and then, is, who's gonna make the determination of what parts to fix? Is it you, or is it Gary, or who's gonna block the road?
The first thing I did, what I did with the first company was, I said, you're a road guy, you know we wanna make it cost effective, don't point out every imperfection that are goth there, things you can actually fix. So if there's a, you know, softball-sized hole in the street, where you can see the road base, what, I mean, you know. So, he's the one that kind of went through it with my cueing, to say, look, too much, you know, we're not gonna do it. Like you said, Gary, you can go all the way and shoot it, right? So that was really what he did, and that was when it came up, was what you see. And Kerry and I drove it, we drove it, and eyeballed it, just to make sure that it seemed to cover all the things we wanted. I think we did great, yeah. We split it pretty much every mark. The thing, reason is, it's, if we do what they say, there might be a few missing here and there, but it'll be a hell of an improvement on the whole job.
So then just the last point here is, if we're gonna approve a certain amount that's a little bit higher than half, if we give them that fifty thousand, right, you bring those two halves out together, we gotta do a pickle, right?
So, submit the bid.
Yeah, submit the bid. So if we do this, we need to make sure that, you know, it's not twenty-five and twenty-five, it's gonna be twenty-two and twenty-three.
And I don't expect high ridge to be that, I think high ridge is like, I think, I think you pick too much in high ridge. That's what I know. That's based on asphalt.
If we did an RFP, another follow-up question, that wouldn't be an additional expense for us, but, uh-
It'd be horrible. The problem with sending out to bid, is, is, because we, we asked our engineers about this, about a year ago, I asked them. Problem with you sending something out to bid, it's not like a good idea, right? Well, you know, here's your bid documents, fix the street, okay, I can bid on that. You gotta say quantities, how many yards, how many square feet, how many inches deep, how much is road base, what's the profile? You gotta hand it on the internet to, you know, twenty companies, and let them bid on it.
And then we don't get to choose, we actually have to choose the lowest.
We have to take the lowest, period. So-
There's something there, but, but if we go over fifty thousand, we have to RFP it.
We have to, that's what I-
Right, so, you just need to make sure that we're authorized, Mark finishes up, let's just make sure it's not twenty-five to twenty-five, we're gonna do a pickle next year.
Yeah, so we're gonna do, I would want, I would want the first, I would want the first twenty-five. Okay, I don't want, I don't want any commitments for high ridge. Just Melody and Kerry. Somebody wants to make a motion to authorize me somewhere-
I'd be delighted to make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to authorize Mayor Bargis to authorize, on behalf of the city, a repair contract, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars to repair Melody and Kerry roads. With Waltz.
I have a motion? Second? Second, okay, hold the favor? Hold the favor? Good, okay, thank you. All right.
Gary, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, good.
Awesome, but-
My guy lost.
You got some way to return your call.
Okay, we had that ordinance on bulk trash, so we saw this ordinance last month, Linda had put in some red lines for everybody, you saw what Linda's changing? On the, uh, Linda, a couple of minor signpost there. Page four of nine. The next page, keep going. That page there, there is no Exhibit A, there is no CO CSI inspection. So that page is the install.
Oh, one quarter.
Yeah, there is no Exhibit A, is there?
Oh, that would be in the warehouse.
I don't remember if it would be in an exhibit in the nuisance ward.
I see, I think there is some way for me to-
All right, so-
Uh, it's the way, yeah, because you put all the warehouse in love, and then-
I would just get, I just, that page is blank. I would just get rid of that one page.
Actually, Exhibit A, the warehouse, the problem.
I don't see Exhibit A's, I didn't, I didn't know what they would, what they would be.
That's the actual, the way it is, so the way the, 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 and then all ordinance is, it's a connection.
Oh, okay.
So Exhibit A-
Oh, I got you, that's right.
It is gonna be a reference.
Where do I need to put it in there?
Uh, I'll have to look at previous one, it was, it was out from the-
That's just formatted, it's only a formatted question, it's, it's non-substantive.
Yeah, I don't remember if that's-
So it's just that the calling sections are the front, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, okay. Any questions on the actual substantive text itself? We got a definition of bulk trash. And the way it reads now is- Right now it says, placing a bulk trash is questioned in excess of ten days prior to the date, it's two point five D, Clint. Okay, so right now, placing a bulk trash in excess of ten days prior to the date of collection is established by, strictly prohibited. Now, do you wanna add unless waived by the town, or, I mean, we're the ones in force, so. Is there a simple ways within, it's really hard to get every exception in there. Which is, we, the ones, we just use common sense, you know, we just, we can't get there from here. I, I don't know what, what a good word would be.
I'm trying to think, we've done that before in the song, right?
Unless, you know, unusual circumstances, you know, as determined by the city council?
This ordinance, I, I don't mean to interrupt here, but if you pass it as this, if you have those special circumstances, you're gonna announce another bulk trash day, and that would probably be within that ten days, right?
It's true.
An additional, so it's still kind of apply that, too.
Okay.
Isn't there an act of God?
Usually, because we're the ones that are for city ordinance, we have discretion. So we usually don't put, you just, you rely on us to be normal.
And that's a good point, though, I mean, it's actually, you need to-
That's a good point.
Take a step back, if it's a special circumstance, we're gonna call another bulk trash.
We're gonna call it bulk trash day. And, and special ones are under the contract, we can ask for collections, yeah, so I think that's a good point, you know, it is actually covered under our contract. Okay, I like it. So you got ten days to put it back, it's the usual nuisance stuff, it's always the same nuisance stuff, you get warnings, you get ten days, you get ten days to drag it back here.
And if they don't?
Theoretically, if they don't, we could, you know, escalate, but usually, net difference. Okay? Yeah, same, same exact, you can change anything last month. There's verbatim from over last month. We'll see if anyone has anything to add, we can approve it as driven through. As amended. This is a new ordinance, right, it appeals twelve oh eight, and this is new, right? So, I have a motion to you-
I have a motion to approve the nuisance ordinance.
Okay.
As, as, with the changes that are discussed with Page Four, Exhibit A, and then the third.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Second, all those, any in favor, any, all of them, okay, all right, okay, very good. All right, thank you, again, hopefully this doesn't come into play, but it's, it's nice to be able to point towards something if somebody doesn't. Thank you for writing that, Linda. Okay, next up is, uh, Declaration of Expenditure for Park Improvements. So, a couple things have come up. One of the things that, uh, we're looking at improving the park, so, two things have come up, rather. We've got some new equipment, which is good. Of immediate concern is, we want to fence the area over there, so little kids don't run in the street. We got a lot more little kids now, there's been a big influx of little kids now. Playground is getting more attractive. We just wanna put up like a two-rail, kind of a nice fence here, just to keep the kids in. As people are driving down the street, they might see the fence and understand there's some activity here. The fence would just go from the edge of the driveway here, down Red Crest, and up to the fence we have, just be on this side. You can still get in there from the, the parking lot here, you still go this way, yeah.
Would that include the fence that would keep dogs out from getting the children? I mean, what kind of answer you talked about, you're talking about-
It's, it's just mainly like a, the one that I had envisioned, was just like a two-rail, you have that picture?
I'm looking for it, I don't know what happened.
Um, it's, it's, it's like a horse fence, like a two-rail, 'cause for, the issue we have, um, is that, it's a front yard. Have fences that are only getting three foot tall in the front yard. So we're, we're limited to the, you know, three foot. So if they jog, dog can jump over three foot, then, um, can't do anything. So, um-
I'm just seeing several of the dogs likely, so I mean, it would be nice to try and not get into it.
Yeah, unfortunately, we need to keep it more, kind of more open, because of the golf carts and some of the, those, and we, we, so, what we, we, to me, the main goal isn't to keep anybody in around. I don't want a kid running in the street. And with the new concrete streets, and we don't have a lot of, um, there's no flashing lights, there's no playground ahead, we don't have a lot of signage. And it's kind of like, people blow through the stop sign anyway. You can either accept that and try and mitigate it, or you can beat your head on the table. And so, I think the next best thing is to make sure, try and keep the kids out. So, one thing is the fence, and so I, just to get bids, we sent it out, the people that did our fencing here, Long's, um, did a lot of fencing. So for a two-ra, two-rail white vinyl, it's got a wire mesh, which I don't want, it was, it was twenty-one hundred sixty. So if everybody's got a ballpark, I'll be looking at two thousand dollars roughly, to put in a fence. You dead, Clint?
It's common, it's not happening.
So that's one issue, is, is putting in, putting in that kind of fence. Well, we do, when we do that, or if we do that, council decides that's good, what we'd also do is we'd put a white kind of picket fence around the air conditioning units, so those are not visually off limits to the playground. And we'll probably move the trash cans over to here. And we will put a fence around the plant, around the garbage cans, to get them off the patio, and again, visually segregated from the playground. So the playground, if you look back this way, you'll see the building. You won't see trash cans, you won't see any, any, any utilities, you won't have the air conditioning units, anything like that, really try and pretty up the playground. So that, that's the first part, is the fence, so it's about a two thousand dollar expenditure. The second thing that we have is, um, let's see if Clint can get us there.
So, so just out of curiosity, ask me, is anybody looking at the fence, like, you have a picture of it?
Yeah, well, try it.
But if it's on the package, I mean, you could-
No, it's because-
I'm not a fence guy, I have no idea, is everybody good with the look?
Well, got you, okay, do you have the other one?
I don't know what's going on here.
I like the tree.
Okay, here's an example of a three-foot tall split rail fence.
And that's vinyl?
I believe, yes, that is vinyl. So that's an example of what, like, it can't have three rails, because it's only three feet tall. To me, we might differ, it's a, it's a taste issue. That's the kind of low-key, low-intensity, uh, kind of thing that I'm looking at, this is like a village. So, to me, that's more of a rural kind of, keep the kids in, and the ball can still go on, but the kids wanna climb through the slats, but, um-
And we're trying to mitigate that, too, by actually not having the maintenance of, of a gate.
So Clint had a real great idea.
Which I just posed from, like, Dallas, just put a little-
You're angling. So there's an opening, but it's angled, so, you know, you can't, so it looks like this, the fence actually then kinks up.
So you can't go straight through it, but you don't have to, you don't have to go through a gate.
So, we don't worry about hanging gates, and swinging gates, and moving parts, and, um, so I thought that was a really clever way to, to do that. So, hey, that's the kind of look that I see for that area, and, you know, right now, I'm just kinda giving everybody cost. So we're about two thousand, should be less than that, twenty-one sixty with the metal, so we'd get around two, or under two.
Hundred sixty feet, I think.
Hundred sixty feet to go down there and wrap it this way. So, we might be around two grand with, with the additional little bits of the puzzle, or clean up the air conditioning units and all that, okay?
So the picket fence part, that you're gonna put in here for bike and track bins and stuff?
I, yeah, there's, so Summer's working on that.
Are they the same height?
No, Summer, we're talking, we're, we'll kind of have to work through that, but that's, that's an add-on, but personally, there's a little difference of opinion on that. I don't think a white rail fence hides the trash can, you know?
Yeah, so-
Probably, one idea that we've kind of kicked around is to do, like, the fence is similar to one, but it's short. But that's not in this code, it's just one of the things, whether beer, I mean, there's other alternatives.
Yeah, I, I think this is, this is a great example of, you know, I first started out looking at the, the fence. You know, and then in talking to Clint, it's like, well, we're doing that, you know, if we're gonna make that pretty, why don't we deal with the air conditioning units and the- Yeah, it's a good idea, you know?
Making new homeowners, you know, screen that stuff, but yet, you know-
We at the city, you have allowances now, exactly, you have to do that, if we're gonna do half.
Need to leave by then. Thank you.
Not sure. Okay, um, but, I don't want any approvals or anything, I just wanna give you guys, if you're gonna puke at that number, then I need to know now. Otherwise, we'll refine it and, and bring numbers for it.
Probably not bad, long metal makes the same thing in metal, and steel would, would make long metal, but it's quite a bit more expensive than-
I, I would like to see a bid on metal, at least compare it.
Okay.
Because I, I have a feeling that this is getting climbed on, that just that, a broad iron seems a little bit more robust.
Yeah, I wonder what happens to that, it seems to me like you can, can't you actually pull those out like those?
I think they're kind of high standing, so I'm, I'm.
Actually, they do have a tendency to pull it out, if, if you drive along their road and you see this. If somebody were a, a horse or something like that, were to bump up against it and bow it out, because it'd bend, well, it'll pop out, because it's only about that deep.
The same tendency that's on, uh, Steve Harvey's. They also see slides that fall out, so.
There's also one other alternative we might want to look at, uh, at Phillips Creek Sports Complex, I have seen concrete fences, posts, those rails. Yeah. And they're, they're preformed because.
They only just come in sudden, like.
Yeah, and I have no idea how expensive they are, but from a, you know, longevity standpoint, I think I could class them one half. But I have no idea, I can try to find out, so.
I, I, I think the feedback is that, yes, we're in favor of trying to make the park more safe.
Okay, yeah, I mean, for, again, I don't know, I've never had a buy-in fence, I don't even know, um, but.
Steve Harvey's is a little bit good.
Okay, well, I don't.
And he's trying to sell it.
I mean, my, my only concern that I have, whatever it is, is I just don't wanna turn the playground into fortress, I don't want it to look heavy.
No, no, it's.
I want it to look lighter.
That's why I think the shorter fails, we're on more, I, I really like the idea of shorters. Really just getting kids to slow down.
But that, you're gonna be cutting every time.
Well, that's why we're gonna have, you know, we're gonna have openings in the middle, hopefully they'll go in the openings, but, yeah, we can't. At some point, you know, yeah, okay.
Might not be a bad idea, if a kid runs and stops paying attention, we'll ask the kid, we'll do, and runs into.
It's landlubed concrete.
You know, it's gonna give a little bit, it's like.
Okay, so I'll interpret this to get more bids, okay, good enough. All right, next up, as part of the same kind of game plan, was, um, click you up the, the first part we have there. So I went to a nursery, started looking at trees. So, um, that is a thousand gallon red oak. So that's what a thousand gallons.
Hundred gallon.
Yeah.
You said a hundred gallon.
Oh, I said a thousand gallons, sorry, a hundred gallons. The time is, it's eleven, right? Yeah, six hours. That guy's eight feet tall, yeah, so that's a hundred gallon container, that's a red oak. And that, I, I sent, I gave everybody a copy, Linda passed it around, um, it should be a, so, they, they only sell wholesale, I, I went to this nursery, the nice thing is that that twenty-five foot tall, whatever tree they've got there is, is six hundred dollars. So we could spend six hundred dollars and get that tree, if we wanna spend only three hundred dollars, we can get a forty-five.